One thing we need to talk about was, sometimes with city government, information you leak out that may not be true information. And I wanted to clarify some things. For the past few weeks, we had some, like family, all those, some grievances and disagreements. But we've been able to, and we will be able to, overcome these things we have. But my true belief is, if you want to give information to people in your community that you say you care about, give them the true information. Don't give partial information and get them running up to a point where they feel that's it. They want to give you balance and assistance. When information is not disseminated properly, or fair, or correctly, then there are all these issues and problems. Some people say that in reference to Formula One, I need to clarify that because Miami is put in there. When Formula One was already coming to Miami, there was nothing that we were able to do to say no, and if we couldn't do it, it was already coming to Miami. And at the time, we sat down, and I said, we need to be the city manager, city attorney, and the people from Miami Gardens, Formula One, to talk about how being a rich stewardess of the community required from great debt. We asked for a certain number of persons to know that they didn't want to have a race either. And then it was, let's talk, and open up a dialogue, and then we came up with this. The benefit of this agreement. I had meetings with our primary organizations, several people that are here this meeting tonight, and we talked about some of the things that we could do to assist the residents with some of the funding that anyone might need. We took the opportunity to finally, once everything is put in place, I was able to provide scholarships to 25 kids from Carroll City Senior High, 25 kids from Moreland Senior High, with a final amount of peace which came up to $50,000. Then we were able to, from our primary local places, identify several people in the community that homes needed to be repaired and redone. We had a 98-year-old woman, my right-hand side of the picture is 98-years-old, 98-years-old, who was helping take care of her 97-year-old brother. And her house was a total ditched building. And we did just that, repaired the house. With some other 90-year-old residents that had plumbing problems throughout the entire house, where they were trying to turn on a faucet, sewage would run out of the house, or run through the plumbing system. We were able to repair that. Then we had some other residents in the community yelling at us that needed assistance with homes, and we were able to help them, assist them with that. By doing so, we had allocated $200,000 towards those we paid, but we only spent $130,000 out of it. Then our small business organizations needed help in trying to provide educational services to their workers and to the salesmen in order for them to try their business with the city and business with other organizations. So we then took $100,000 and allocated that towards the Oasis, which assisted those small businesses and continued to assist those small businesses. With assisting them, helping them to get their businesses up to money, make it smarter. And we had several of those businesses at the city hall. And they were in the Oasis received that check, so that was the scholarship fund for those businesses. Out of that $100,000, we only spent $40,000 out of it. So those were some of the things that we did along with taking care of the STEM program here at Orange Park. Those kids that have often done science, technology, engineering, or math programs here with the C program, and I know a few guys came in, you probably saw somebody, the workers with the C stuff on. Those kids are doing things with foster nations right now, with their robots and the engineering, their STEM stuff that they do in that program, just like Chinese, you know, my baby doesn't say Chinese, but it's like a foreign language program. So those are the facts that was spent on Formula One. That's the money that I promised the community I sat down with totally through the last year that I spent for Formula One. We still have a lot of what I have to do with this, because we don't have any plans to do just that. We want to be able to reach as many households as we possibly can. There's some things that we got going on right now, the nation with our border with Long Island Beach. We can't go into details about it. But we're doing everything that we can on top. Right now, we have resolutions that was passed asking, two resolutions, people, six, that were passed that has constantly to ask the county to assist us with the possibility of changing any water. That's still a big problem. But we're working hard to ensure that the lives of our residents in this community is always in the best interest of our residents. Not that I want to, to clear some facts up, because again, don't tell the truth, or just tell partial truth. Then there's a, that's a problem, that's a problem. We saw what happened in DC on January 6th, when people started making out agents and false information being spread. That's not happening here, this city, we work too hard for our cities to be torn down. We continue to strive to do the best job that we possibly can with the president's best intentions at stake. So tonight, we're going to share some more information as to what's going on here in this area and throughout Miami Gardens. So again, I thank you guys for being here tonight and taking part in this. So Mr. Mayor, I think we'll talk about the rest.
Thank you, Mayor, appreciate it. What we're going to do tonight is that all of our partners, if you can come up and give me some of the progress, programs, events that happen at the city, you will then have an option to ask some questions. Most of those questions are around, and you will want to listen to that. They'll be used over for some presentations and presentations to you. You can answer some questions if you don't have access, okay? First of all, we are going to chief, tell them about the project.
Um, briefly, my thought about this city area is that as we did this prior, the areas of construction, as well as backup tech, was marshalling, waterless, and floodwatering areas. Uh, we have a lot of organizations that have a lot of individuals with their skill, especially a lot of the kids and a lot of our families. There is easy access to the stereo phone, and the devices they need to, as easy as a flash plug, excuse me, USB, that they use for to put an ignition, they want to start the vehicle, and go. We've seen a lot of children now using that and explaining that it costs, whether it be TikTok or Instagram, and using that as an avenue to encourage other children to do the same thing. So what I encourage you to do is to be mindful of leaving different items on the way to the vehicle, making sure you lock up your vehicle, and just be aware of the surroundings. As you also know, this is next time here. And if you have a lot of people that have calls, such as scenes, then you know that scenes may answer a lot of questions and maybe they could be more vulnerable. And so there are, they try to add to your call waiting and ask various questions, or to a tight school, get you to go ahead and be willing to maybe turn a little fun or encourage them to do certain things. So they can be very mindful when you're getting phone calls, when they're businesses and whatnot, and when they ask you certain confidential information, such as, which is social security, or they ask for your name and anything that mentioned, don't be so quick to give them that information. They should know that information ahead of time, in order to give them that information. Uh, we had aggressive driving detail that was started the day after Christmas. We did it from a bottom up. We're still doing some enforcement, but with the aggressive driving detail that we did, we targeted a lot of individuals that were stolen, provided fast, not community. But that being said, and then at one time, we're able to give over 4,000 citations. That's a lot of citations, a lot of citations. But what that meant was, that increased the number of traffic incidents that we received that were occurring in Miami sections. And so it helped increase that type of exit that's going on in Miami. We have coming up, our Blue Six Sports, as you know, our spring break tournament for Miami is coming up. Again, our Blue Six Sports are beginning to be a real competition next week. And we'll be going to the border of Miami, competing against other cities and attempting to win trophies and things that mentioned, to show a lot of the talents that they have. We just had our P.A., which is our league athletic league, Six U boys flag football, and also our middle school, Lady and Touchables, both of them have a championship. When that being said, and Lady and Touchables was the first time that they ever got into flag football,
...control with those tired of that.
I have Kia and three young boys tried to steal my car out of the yard, but the alarm scared them off. I called the police, the police still coming. We had a conversation, he asked me if I have cameras on my house. I said no, I said my neighbor has cameras. He said to me, well, Steve, we can retrieve the footage, give me a call, and we'll see if we can apprehend. Okay, I called, I called the station. I'm not happy, they must have moved to another country. I never got a response. So when you have a problem and you call the police and you don't get anything done, who do you call from that point?
You can call the chief's office and I will make sure that it's handled properly. Uh, we have, I have a, I have a friend, she's 42, she's over at the investigation division, and she can speak with you and make sure that that's handled properly.
Hi, how you doing? You get back on the Kia for this young, I'm saying, lady. Uh, Kia have a recall. I just finished my recall, my granddaddy last week on citizen laws and that issue. So I think a lot of people don't know that. Take your car to Kia, call and find out if you're under that recall so they can take care of it. Uh, and another thing, uh, the Jazz in the Garden, I've been going there for over seventeen years. I was there since day one. Uh, it, it was a good turnout, it turned out well. Some things that I saw and didn't disagree with, for instance, when you're in the VIP section, you go in and they like supervise you more strictly. Okay, okay, that, the ones that's in general admission, come in with everything, gloves and, and, and act all, I guess that's the thing to say. Everybody can do what they want to do. And my thing is, if we're trying to get example for our kids, I think you're gonna let them come in with a wagon, with everything on there and not check it. So I've been noticing that, and this is not the first year. And my concern is, when you dealing with politics and dictatorial, and when I see the Hooper machines up, I'm trying to figure out, what was that all about? I just don't understand that. The example that it said, especially for the older ones, a lot of people didn't even come back the seventh time because a lot of things was going on. So my thing is, how are you gonna control that from that? You know, we used to do something in class, and if you're gonna do something in class that was not appropriate, why? I don't know what everybody else thought. But I was just amazed to see that. We're not in a nightclub, this is a jazz in the garden. So it's just like, everybody just looks okay. And we're talking out from the top to the, and I'm like, I don't know, it just took it out of certain class. So how? Was it anything goes and goes with it?
It was not anything goes, but that's why we were, uh, paying attention. And we now know the suspension path of events. We can talk about how can we do things better, because we're always looking at what can we do better. Uh, for instance, the tweet, if it means that we need to have better security, we look at all those open avenues, we have those discussions, so we can think every time we do that, we do better.
I have a mic. I like to go with our police, because the only time I see police, they even going to the station or coming from the station, unless there's a major campus incident. But my thing is this, having lived in Miami Gardens all my life, all after much part, now I go over by the stadium. I just recently tried to get car insurance, and I know this may not make sense to a lot of people, but with two old cars, my insurance be that much. But do you know that the way the people, the, 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 you know, who give you the quote, what they did was, as soon as they found out where I live, they told me, we can't give you a quote. Why you can't give me a quote? Because of the crime rate in Miami Gardens. And it, we can't beat what you paying now. Now, I pay almost $300 an hour. So they couldn't even give me a quote because they couldn't beat it. And their reason was, was the crime rate in Miami Gardens. And I remember there was a time when we first incorporated everything, everything was really nice. Then all of a sudden it got a nickname, Bird of the Garden, and everything kind of slowed back down. Now it's going back up again. I think on the news, I thought, saw two incidents where somebody got killed in Miami Gardens just this week alone, this, when it started beginning. So why, I mean, how big is our police force? When we need to unleash the police force, you know? Now, your body language, I'm kind of, I'm kind of bothering you about the question. But do we need to increase the police force or what? Because one of the ways to deter crime is to have a police presence. So I go to Miami ladies, they got a park sitting here on, on that main way. Now, it might be empty, we know it's empty, but a lot of, no, no, they don't want to take that chance. But why isn't there a police presence? And is the crime rate really going up? You know, I, I like to know, because I, I honestly, Evan, I'm not the only one. I think about moving out, but then the thing about it is, you know, when you move, you gotta make sure you're ready to pay those, those prices, help them, it's like, probably. But I really would like to see more of a police presence. So now, if you can't get that, I see the mayor sitting here, and he might, you know, be able to expound what's for. But I, I think I'm the only one who want to, you know, have a police presence, more of a police presence in Miami Gardens.
We are visible out here, there's a police presence. But it's like, the mayor, just mentioned a little earlier about the facts and action. And a lot of the comments, the, 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 uh, elements or, um, magnified situation. So when you talk about, does it really matter if there are people in here, or some, I see it through the window, and a lot of, uh, I was really dramatic, details, incident, you know, whatever, or. And I can't compare, it's that high distance, and I heard, because I'm concerned what's happening this year. We do, uh, do a lot of details, a lot of traffic details, a lot of enforcement, um, in order to be present in the entire city. So, and we are delighted to hire.
Hello, Kia. Um, I have some concerns for this neighborhood. And I don't know what's going on, and that's one thing. When something is being torn down or constructed in the neighborhood, the neighborhood would like to have some kind of knowledge of it. There's so much noise going on on the other side of the canal. They moved the train, the train whistle, it has increased, which is, maybe that's safety for that side. We got construction going on over there, and every night, there's gunshots. I don't know if somebody's doing target practice in the middle of the night, but it continues over there. And on the back street, which is Seventeenth Avenue, they take that as a drag strip, and they come around that corner so fast. We've had four accidents in one month on that same corner. And from there, they shoot down the street. There are some residents on that street coming toward Twenty Second Avenue. They drive those cars back in the back, and you can't see. You don't know which way they're going in. The day I was on my way here, there was an old yellow and beautiful party getting over. That man came down the street so fast, and then no children were out there, no dogs were out there. So where are we gonna go with maybe something that they have? I know the police department has all kind of mechanism. What a watch on that street. And it's dark back there now. We were promised that when they put those trees in front of our houses, they were gonna come every three years and trim them. They have not trimmed those trees. They have never trimmed those trees. And we also have some trees that was there since I was two years old. They have not trimmed those trees. That wasn't supposed to be on our watch, but now that's so big. So we got some dark areas, and I'm not gonna say the police department is not doing a good job, because they are. I saw some people breaking in my neighbor's house, he had a house up the sale. And in about twenty minutes, they were there. They were able to save that woman's home from being destroyed. So I'm not gonna bash them, they doing a, a very good job of what they have. But we also need to be watched, for you know you have children that are not doing the things that's right. There are houses on the street now, there, I looked at moving houses, halfway houses, but there are people that are probably under the watch of some organization. And they walk up and down the street all day, up and down the street. I know this is a, a free society, but there should be some concern, even with the wild dogs. People don't even walk anymore because of the loose dogs in the neighborhood. I don't know what could be done. I pray about it, I cringe every time I see the children walking around the corner, because the dog on the other side sometime hears out. I call 311, you know, but they tell me, find out where the dog lives, and call us back. So I, I don't know what else, but I do think that most of our the are doing a great job. Uh, again, um, I'd like to commend the police department. I have personally known, because I'm already going to various meetings and around here, doing things in Miami Gardens, you guys still have a visible, very visible presence. And I was like, wow, yeah, you know, this is great. And this was just within the last month or so that I noticed it, and you guys are doing a great job, I'm sure. As far as I'm concerned, thank you.
I know, I know about the stadium, and I don't see no police presence, but I do see. I, I definitely feel something, you know, the light going on coming down there, and I'm like, oh.
So she's saying that she lives by the stadium, and she doesn't see any presence? I don't know if you guys could hear that, police presence. So she's probably in the la, um, Lake Lucerne area.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you, I appreciate it. Good luck, all, so thank you.
So many good problems, all the issues. Uh, I do have people taking notice of this. So once after the meeting, I will sign and then I'm talking to you personally. Issues regarding, uh, on the, uh, especially issues regarding Jazz in the Garden. We actually have a meeting tomorrow to go over that regarding Jazz in the Garden. And when the plan is actually enabled, to follow us, I'm sure. I understand that now I'm going to do a talk over here. The tax regulation, we're going to talk about some programming.
Okay, we've got, we have, uh, twenty eight that have been generated over the companies that had, you know, they had set up shop, and you know, they, um, actually paid, literally paid revenue. Where's that money going? And how can we balance it out with the residents as well? And schools, and students, and, or the need of money to, you know, with the taxes?
Move me a dress or something.
How's everyone doing? So I'm looking through, um, I want to hold a little bit of a record, yeah, we have a lot of problems. So I'll start with a, um, category. We have a state program that is, we also have a community, actual programs, by the way, Jalen's trust. We have four little sites, we have the city, the team program, and we, uh, another school program that are cool right now. We also have some of those special plans for those who have children or grandchildren, in some cases, grandchildren, make sure you contact us, we have a channel, um, active somewhere in our community children's trust, and contact us, we have a program. So our sports programming, um, we do daily, we have football, just got, um, people that are ready. We got the work clothes and the football, um, we have, we have football, and we have gymnastics, gymnastics facility. We have pickleball, which, I don't know if you know, pickleball, because we use the, I use pickleball, pickleball. As our, the rest, two or three months, by, um, by Miami Gardens, as well as, who are not ready, come out to this, and have a great time, pickleball is a lot of fun. I mean, anyone can play pickleball. We also have a walking club, you can live with, there's a nice walking track, um, that should take full advantage of, for any city residents, and if you get your experience in, it's a minor. Um, but if you can make better, come and join us and join the walking club, we have a good time. We have baseballs in season, if you want to play right now, baseball, um, program is rolling. Uh, we have got six children in the baseball area, so registration is still open. We have basketball in season, uh, running out, uh, as I mentioned, probably the gymnastics place right here. And I've seen this, I won't even go into all the programs, but the senior center, uh, some of our systems here, in one of our gardens, that is, uh, that's another thing, we have gardens now, which is on all our parks. And those who come out, as they come on board, we are putting gardens in there. And speaking about the theater, and yes, we want volunteers. So all volunteers that are interested in helping us maintain our garden, we love you, so. Absolutely, send your name, you know, and usual, you know, that you love, um, and our garden. Um, just so that you all are aware, I know, we have, I think it's probably here, you're talking about the upcoming parts. Um, as our parks come on, like pretty much art, we take great part, great pride, we may do our parts. So our expectations for residents to use our parks, enjoy our parks, be effective in completing, be effective in the state, and the neighborhood, and utilize and enjoy. And for me, so this year, yes, all our artists, with the exception to the senior center, is available for any residents, the artist, yes, which is to, um, staff, it's going to be available up in the parks. That's the tomato thing, you want it or I want it, I'm just saying.
All right.
So next, if you go back, I'll be with you.
Okay.
Any questions?
We had to do it, too. So, I have a question, are there any spring break programs for the kids?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. She's gonna read them.
Yes, we have a spring break in here, because we are, um, Jersey City, AJP. As a matter of fact, Jersey City, we will come here, we'll have our staff here, and normally will be our team programs, and we will have, if you want, pictures, or any business, I'll be.
Do you know the number of potential spots there are for some of youth programs?
Some youth programs, we are out, and we will have thirty AJP, we will have seven on Jersey City. Here will be another sixty, and we will, we will make fifty-sixty. We also have a vendor that will be doing the program at AJP. We will have that number yet, and we also have one outside, then we got that will be doing a program that, that, uh, normally that's in our, she takes fifty-sixty children, and the C program that's here, the Scam, they will have forty children there. She's also gonna have her original site over there, up in the, opportunity for Scam program.
And, uh, how did you per se, is there gonna be a vendor? Where they have a day in which they will come in and, and try to get registered? How do they go about getting qualified?
Anyone who wants information on summer camp, or, um, registration, can contact us. This is at three zero five, six two two, zero eight, zero, that's the part for recreation.
Good evening, what is the age requirement for the senior program?
Fifty-five, this is generally what we like, thank you.
Do you have some more questions?
We can't hear you.
And very improved, your staff, and their characters, and their dressing up, and they take, they have it, gone there. And it's, it's amazing, just to drive through and see the characters, how they get into it.
What is she talking about?
Because they always there, and they join us, and we think so, I wanna put you on that. Anything, I have these.
What is she referring to? Couldn't hear her.
Hi, Miss.
For kids?
Congratulations for all you did. Uh, the question I wanted to ask, because I know in some of these.
Okay, the lady that's asking the question is Miss Pat, and she's head of the crime march at Scott Lake.
It was crazy, we said over here, where they said she was not allowed, that it was children, for the children. And they sent her away, so is that so?
That they did not, the children, it's been a while, where it was, and if you have this.
She's not in the room, but I keep calling.
It's not great, actually, Chris is just in the film, um, and what she's at, and that they promised to someone else. If any resident in the park was, we could help, uh, add, or any park, we could exception of the senior center. Because we have a garden club at the senior center, and the seniors would absolutely have my head if I let someone else have their parks. So, and we, we plan on, if, if, once we get volunteers to help with taking a lot, we know this is a garden, and continue to do.
So anything that's in the senior garden, we're not to go there?
For the, for the, we, now, on Friday, we have market Friday at the senior center. So leaving out the, 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 tree garden, or any of the harvest that's left over from the garden, we can give that, you know, sale, April, or anything like that, you know, the fruits are there, we give.
That's true.
Um, our, we, we are Miami Gardens, so we should have gardens, because.
That's what I'm saying, we're Miami Gardens, we need gardens.
We know that fresh trees in gardens is the rule, and fresh trees in gardens is the regular dress. As I was, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just.
Oh, Stewie, lost, and I gotta come.
Thank you. Can you elaborate on that, which, uh, was in the newspaper regarding the orange pool, coming fed, the rolling oaks, and the benefits of that to the community? People are asking, I, I don't know, so, uh, can anybody share information like that?
I don't have any, 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 for someone, um.
Because one was, and then you know, uh, donations or something like that for all the dogs. Okay.
I don't know, I think she's right, she's right.
I don't know about her, I know one is.
Yes, I'm concerned about the swimming pools that has not been built, and the swimming pools that were in place, and we decided not to build them back. We do not have a Olympic size swimming pool for our kids to learn how to swim, so they can compete, and, you know, that's. And I talked about this years ago, and I said it was necessary. But now I'm noticing, we don't have a really one pool, and that's a kiddie pool besides, well, actually much more across the street. You have a kiddie pool, and many purposes set up, we have a kiddie pool, and I think we may have one, and no, no.
No.
No one? Now, I think we need a little bit more, like I say, we do, we have a size.
No, one was a good move, they broke it down.
But, but let me say this, and everyone that goes against it, I always say this. Swimming, learning to swim is not a recreation sport. It's a sport, and it is not a recreation, it is a, it's a skill. We live in this, I don't know, I just spent my time at school, because I got come to Lake, and this, say this to me. But our children, let them learn how to swim, is imperative. In Miami, we have backwater, we have paddles, we have lakes, and we have a beach. We do not need an Olympic size pool to learn how to swim. And I don't think we do that. We do not need an Olympic size pool to learn how to swim, because that is a fact. The child come on to swim at three feet of water. Once the child over comes, being supported and helped, because there's a lot of new officers who can't swim. Once you're over on, you feel a lot. And once you get there, you start to swim, it does not matter if it's three feet or if it's nine feet. What is important, and I don't want to be able to semantics of this pool versus that pool, what I can say is passing regulations, remember? Your children, your grandchildren, and your great grandchildren need to learn how to swim. It is, if you got a baby, are not near your child, and they attend the birthday party, and they get them a pool, and he's gonna get out. If that baby have an accident, and you give it up, how many times you try, and lose the first accident, and you're all over again? So if you want to learn how to swim, also, you can get a, get a set of hands, and a child, and a red child.
A wheel drone. A wheel drone.
So swimming is a personal, I would say, anyway. It is a character that anyone to swim, and we must learn to swim. If you don't possess a character, you're not, you're not, you're not.
She's asking if they're having, if they have any plans for programs for people who are disabled.
Absolutely, and by the way, we do have, um, and we say, we do have, so, we are also part of this, my part of the program. There is a, there is a, my part, which is nationwide. And nationwide, if not, to come to Miami, it is nationwide. So we are starting a teaching library program, so when you teach that, you know, you can certify, and they come to the agents, and they can come report for us, anything, I still have, or we have, if they would make it. Thank you, you are, and anything I need to do.
Said, meet, you know, the last, the December.
I told you, I wasn't saying it in that.
Said, the last, no, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put on YouTube.
It's a big file, look, I'm recording.
What day is Miami Gardens?
Miami Gardens now.
Miami Gardens, no, we're gonna show you.
I made it.
Made me what?
What's the last?
Uh, I'm Mr. Mark, uh, the, 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 the department. Uh, I present a few waters that are in, on, in the city. Before I clear, uh, I was about to put in my chin, my score.
Take the truck.
Uh, the city is spending a lot of money, uh, to provide transit free for residents. Uh, so, I would like to challenge, and just my encourage, to please, uh, uh, the last, the last. Uh, the last one.
This is Mr. Bernard from Public Works.
We're able to reduce the, the travel time on each of our, so the less we have. Uh, so we're encouraging you to please be chosen for that one that the city is spending. And it's free to please be chosen. And we're kind of, uh, the papers are working on the seventh of November project. Even if you're, you can see the list of the road. Uh, the meaning is that we are extending that roadway from Tuesday to Friday. Because a lot of people, uh, we're hoping to get that by the end of our first program, which is since a senior. Uh, we also got a couple of projects that for a couple of communities that are in design. Uh, less than six, one and two. Uh, we went through the whole process of taking over their wheelways because of the privacy of the tenant. And currently we are designing to improve the drainage and the roadway in our community. Uh, we're currently working on this, this one and two. Uh, the other faces are also for works, uh, as a system. Another meeting that we're waiting on to help out is the Kings Garden community. That's another bigger community in very, very good way. Uh, the city has located some funding. So we're kind of going through the process to capture that face in the roadway. Uh, we're having a great image. Uh, we have a project with Mondo and all of us in the Salt Lake area. The cabbages are pretty old, built in nineteen sixty. Uh, so we're currently, we want to extend the life of those, uh, cabbages. So we have a project as for, uh, to strengthen the cabbages and also support the handrail to ensure those cabbages keep on, uh, over the next fifteen years. We are committing to do these projects and one on that street, uh, just over twenty second. Uh, there's a few houses on that street. The flagline is very, very bad. Uh, so currently we're finishing a project for drainage. We're putting several structures in the cabbages. We're fixing the road as part of the included side of which we didn't have before. Uh, so we're currently finishing a, a project. Uh, we actually have several projects, but for the sake of time, I'll just sit to these and just wait for some project.
Yeah, she's talking about the, uh, the trolleys. Well, we have an issue with not having our residents to get on the bus anymore. Their trolley said come into our neighborhood. This is Mr. James Ferguson. He's well in his age. He has to walk about to Twenty Second Avenue with the walker to get to a metro bus. There are no other transportation provided for him. And I don't see any of the, uh, no trolleys or anything coming in the neighborhood. So how can we get our neighborhood to get some trolley to some transportation? Even if they just have to go to Wal-Mart, a Wal-Mart bus or something. They need some way to get around. And there's a lady, she didn't come today. She lost her job because she couldn't get to work on time. So if it's possible, can you please speak with, maybe your staff as if they can get some kind of communication? So they can get on a trolley or go somewhere, wherever they need to go and he can walk a little bit, but not that much. That's Bunch Park.
Bunch Park, they got rid of the trolley.
Hundred and sixtieth and seventeenth court, right on the canal.
Yep. Not anymore. Not anymore. Not anymore.
And that bus has been coming to there over sixty years.
So that's what I'm going to say, I'm going to leave that with you because, uh, so what would you, we pick when we're getting these contents? And because the city is also looking at expanding transit services. So this is not something that we, we, uh, we want to know where for five years, as far as one of them is here. She also wanted to, uh, ask to expand what we have with this department here. So we collect those locations and allow us the next time we demand moving up to be able to accommodate those other locations and then on time. So that's, that's why we had these conversations to be able to identify.
They actually had a trolley in Bunch Park and then they got rid of the trolley, not sure why. So the trolley would take you from Bunch Park all the way to Florida Memorial. And then for some reason, when they upgraded the trolley, they got rid of the trolley in this area.
We're developing a path system, which is started on February twenty third. Uh, I can say, I used to train to work. So I, I trained to travel to the station and then I catch the bus twenty two, which went around to the office. They stopped it. So now I have to do, but I have other ways to get to work. So even myself, I asked those because they took me to a really cold route. So that was a complicated, it took several routes because they were going to, uh, increase the frequency of the buses. So they eliminated a lot of bus stops and routes, which we, even as a senior, but we maintain this stop for the current. So we actually are spending money going after where the county buses stop usually to remove the infrastructure, which is costing us a lot because it's out of the roadway. This is something that's, you know, the guy that I just, you know, forced those in the stop. Uh, we will follow up with them and make sure that in the next time we do, uh, we see what we can do through the.
Uh, the county, I mean, we have a speaker on District One, is that the vehicles go to their houses and bring them to the nearest stop. And that's when we had a meeting at the, uh, library, that's what they said. So, uh, yes, Mr., um, increase the frequency of the bus taking away from the side street. But they have vehicles, uh, for the stables. You could go inside, there's smaller vehicles going there. Oh, and we'll take it to your nearest destination or to your bus stop there. So there's something you want to talk with the county about because that's part of the better bus system.
The Metro Connect.
Did you say something about working on the streets and everything?
Yes, we do, we do.
Over there on 100 and where I live, 37th Avenue is my backyard. Every few months, they fixing the street again, they repaving the streets. And the thing about it is, all that traffic, there are no barriers. So with our backyard being, you know, on 37th Avenue, every time you turn around, somebody is turning their car into our yard and tearing our fence down. And I brought this before to City Council before. So, and recently, in September, the city, well, whoever you all have working on the street, they tore my fence up. I just got my fence fixed this weekend. It took six months to get them to admit to the fact that they had tore my fence up. But the people who stay on the corner right there on 199 and 37th, in the past year, they've had their fence torn down four times. Everybody along 37th Avenue, and we don't have no wall. It's not, you all came for some barriers or something there to protect us? Because everybody is always just, you know, they come down 37th Avenue, they going crazy, and the next thing you know, they busting through our fence. You know, and the last person, I've had it happen before, but this was a driver, and they went right into my fence and almost hit my house. She swerved, and then she hit the people next to me. She tore their fence up, she tore my fence up, she tore their fence up. So, how does the City of Miami Gardens protect us from that? Or do we have to go?
That's a state.
So, uh, not with access for, uh, the president's, uh, actually alone in the town.
Yeah.
Uh, so let's see, you know how anyone who is, uh, installed in that world, but what would you, uh, maybe, and I'll follow up to you, follow up on that. And see if they ask for issues, uh, the city, uh, the city.
I'll ask that question when the ma- um, the city manager goes up. So this is Sharon, Sharon Fraser. She's, uh, part of the PTA and PTA.
I do disability. Even if you're not a senior and you have a disability, or even if you're a veteran, you can get that card. Now, we know, with all due respect to the young man here, about transportation, he's talking about y'all's stuff. How many of y'all know about the TPO, Transportation Planning Organization? How about the CITT, Civilian Independent Trust, Transportation Trust? Y'all got an ally down there on that board who just got here, his name is Ken Kilpatrick. He is the president of the Brownwood Neighborhood Association, Civic Association. So you know what, it only takes you guys to carpool, one of the guy there. Get on that bus. Transfer to the 78th Street Northside Metro Rail and go down there and represent your city. Because this is the city. We have 34 municipalities in Miami-Dade County. Miami-Dade County has all of these advisory boards, and they be meeting in the morning time, in the noon time, at nighttime. So they can, if you got concerned residents, because of concerned citizens, I go down there, at nighttime, I look on that MiamiDade.gov, and I see exactly where the meetings are. So I get up, I park my car at the early tonight, or the MLK, and I take that nice ride home down there. And I stand there, I sign, sometimes it be just two or three of us. Even though I don't live in Miami Gardens, I got five members, got houses. Family members live up in Miami Gardens, got houses. So, that is not a long ride to Tallahassee, but it's a short ride to Miami-Dade County BCC and represent your city.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it very much. Our last presentation will be the vicious mills plan as another partner to go over some of our projects that have happened in the city. And then we'll wrap up, I'm gonna have Mr. Clay wrap up on a couple of questions that were asked. And then once he's done answering those questions, then he'll call me back.
Hello, how are you doing, everybody? I'm the vicious, I'm the director of Miami-Dade County, so I should all be developed. It's coming to the city. Uh, we're very, very, we're just kind of, uh, private, uh, we're, uh, we're, uh, and I wanted to start off with this new medical office. It's actually gonna be coming in right across the street, uh, at 1555 Northwest 22nd Avenue. That's the vacant church property that's across the street. So it is gonna be, um, torn down, and it's gonna be redeveloped. And this is the medical office that's gonna be there. It's currently in review for site plan. Um, once they complete that process, then we'll go through to the building permitting phase. The next project I wanted to let you know about is the senior housing, um, project. This is also within our site plan review phase. It's gonna be located behind the Senior Family Center. So this is gonna be a project completely dedicated to housing for the seniors within our community on city property. This is, uh, a new project that's coming to us, it's along Northwest 27th Avenue. This is just north of the city hall, and it's south of the, um, proposed town center area. This is gonna be an outdoor entertainment zone. Um, if you're familiar with some of the outdoor venues throughout South Florida, um, The Wharf, for example, it's gonna be, um, kind of an outdoor, uh, assembly use that we're very excited about. And so this is also gonna be coming through to our site plan process, and it's gonna go along with our entertainment overlay that runs along that Northwest 27th Avenue corridor. And then the last project I wanted to mention is the Hard Room Village project. This is actually a new multifamily project that is just about ready for completion. So it's actually, uh, already built, there's just a few more items, and they'll be getting their certificate of occupancy through our building department. So we're very glad to have more housing options within the city for our residents. So, thank you for listening.
I guess we're carrying down the, the.
The farmhouse? But you can't move in. Uh, so you remember, uh, we've been trying to deal with that since back in the day, uh, when, when you were here. So it's actually about county line all the way down to about, yeah, Chevron is the one we're talking about. And so, remember now, a person's property is up to the road. So that fence is actually personal property. And so we've been working with North County, the Citizens Association, to get with those, it's actually 18 homes along that stretch from 215 down to, uh, Chevron, I think it's a 208, maybe, 28 or something like that. Uh, we've, we've given, um, I think it's the president of the North County, uh, Association, we have given her, uh, forms if necessary. You? I don't remember what was we doing. Ms. Moley? Okay, yes, yes, Ms. Moley is the person who we, we provided that information to. And she's working to, uh, get those homeowners to give us the permission, uh, to, uh, fix that fence. That's the first step. So once we do that, then we can do something similar than we did, uh, back on 187th Street over by Carroll City, and restore that fence, and then make it nice and pretty, uh, when people come into the city. So it'll be a process, but is, uh, Ms. Moley, however she's doing with getting the signatures and everything, if that's going well? Okay? Okay?
I have no idea what she's saying, we can't hear.
No, once we are able to get the homeowner permission, similar to what Bernard was talking about with what we did over in Lizzie's face and what we're trying to do in Kings Gardens, we will be able to take action and, and finish the project. No? Okay? Yes, ma'am?
We can't hear.
It does. If you look at your survey, you will see that your property goes up to the street. So if you have a swell or something like that, that is actually the property on the possibility. That's, ever since property has been sold, that's, that's, if you take a look at your survey, I believe they do. If you were to take a look at your survey, you would definitely see that property goes up to the street. Yes, ma'am?
She asked, does Miami Gardens make money, um, from Jazz and the Gardens?
It goes into our general fund to handle police services, certain things in public works, internal services, finance department, so on and so forth.
It's, I think it's on 27th and 189th Street.
Just finished.
It's, uh, I'll, I'll do a walk-in talk tomorrow, 'cause it's near me.
There was another question over here where somebody asked about taxes. Okay? So, l- l- let me just give you, uh, a quick overview. Prior to 2014, okay, that's when I got here, and when the manager, uh, took over as well, the total taxable value of the city was around three and a half billion dollars. So to put that in perspective for you, just think about a business's total value. So the total, every property in the city, you add them all up in terms of value, you got to three and a half billion dollars. Last year, that value was over seven billion dollars. So the development that you see, the development that Smith was talking about, the cranes and all of the construction and all of those types of things, have contributed to that value over the last 10 years. Because of that, we have been able to keep our tax rate the same. Our tax rate has been the same at 6.9363 mils for the last 10 years. The county has relatively kept their millage rate the same as well, around 4.5 mils. The school board has not. If you take a look at your tax bill, you will see, when they do the two-year comparison, which is on the right-hand side of your tax bill, you will see what last year's tax rate was and what this year's tax rate is. If you take a look at the school board in comparison, it has increased generally year after year. The reason why you may be paying more in taxes is because the value of your property has increased.
Yes.
Which is a good thing. So if you, e- even with keeping the tax rate the same, you may pay more in taxes because the value of your property has increased. Now, there are things that happened back in 2011, they control that. They control the increase because there was something called Save Our Homes legislation that was put in place. If you are a senior, there are additional home state exemptions that you may qualify for. So the standard exemption is $50,000. If you are a senior and you meet certain other requirements, you may be eligible for an additional $25,000 exemption that you have to apply for through the property register. Sure.
If it wasn't for me going downtown, I wouldn't know about that. You have a paper that usually will come out every month, or every two months, or every three months. It does not specify information like that through here. So we could generally read it and see what we need to do. Your paper is more consistent of partying and process, like the GOV. I don't understand how you can have this paper. And I know of another city that has a paper that actually breaks down things, including the restaurants in the community. Sometimes you need to come outside of the box to find out what other areas are doing to get information out to their resident, so they can notice. Because if you feel that, they have to call to the city and ask these questions, a lot of seniors don't have that information or know of it. So what you're saying is good and it's true. You need to change up. Is it okay if I leave my paper?
I don't need to see it, Miami Laker, I don't live in Miami Gardens. But, I, 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 w- w- well, when you get your property tax bill, that information is included in there. Now, I don't disagree with you about putting that information in the newspaper, putting it on a website. Those things are great things. But that information is included inside of your property tax notice that you receive in your tree notice.
That is true.
Why do we have a paper?
No, what she's saying is true.
What's, what's in here?
Hmm?
What's in here?
I don't know. Very good question. That is a good question.
Okay, so if you, if you, when, when the young lady asked me about the Jazz Gardens specifically, I talked about our general. So our general fund is a big pot of money, where revenue that's generated from taxes that we talked about here, and from other sources, including revenue received.
Her question was.
That pot of money is used.
Have they thought about, um, what'd she say? Have they thought about allocating money that's generated from Jazz and Gardens to music education in some of the schools? Uh, she's from Norland High School.
Um, but, those types of programs that you're talking about, music education, after school, uh, our, uh, youth sports program, all of those programs are run out of the Parks Department, which is funded by that big pot of money where Jazz and Gar- Jazz and the Gardens is included. Now, I would like for you to talk to Ms. Murphy, because she's always interested in starting and establishing new programs, if there is a desire for people to do that. Fair enough?
She was, she, she had her hand up before me. The lady right there. Jill Tracy likes your hair. Jill Tracy likes your hair.
Well, the, though, that has always been an issue with some of the programs that you're talking about. I'm assuming that you're talking about the programs that can run out of community development. Those programs and the income levels are dictated by the funding source. So the funding that we use for those programs come from the federal government, usually HUD. So they tell us what those, uh, qualifications must be. And we can't go above that. Generally, it's up to 80% of the area median income is what those programs, uh, allow us to do. There are programs that are being worked on throughout that will allow you to go up to what they call 140% of area median income, which will include more people getting the ability to be helped.
Can you address the, um, what Mr. Raggris brought up regarding the Orange Bowl Committee and Roland Oaks Park? And also regarding the 35 acres, the, we, I mean, we saw briefly that little, um, part on 27th Avenue. Where is that? Is that 189th Street and 27th Avenue?
Yeah, just south.
Okay. And then, lastly, the parking and the traffic, how is that being addressed when it comes to that massive building for the senior center on 12th Avenue? How is that being addressed? Is that, 'cause you know, that's two lanes right there, it's already its own issue. So now you have, and how many people are in that department as well?
I'm gonna start from the back, 'cause, 'cause I'll forget.
Okay, that's fine.
So related to the project on 12th Avenue, the senior housing? Yeah. It's 150 units.
Okay.
Uh, and actually, the traffic issue that you have, once that's built, it will actually resolve it. The entrance to the senior center is actually a few paces back, like right in front of where this development will be.
Right.
You'll notice that there's a turning lane there. Uh, so you can't go in there now because you're still working through it. But once that's complete, you won't have those problems anymore where people are trying to cut in there and get that turn before traffic comes. Um, the one right before that was?
Uh, well, the 27th Avenue, I just wanted to know exactly where it was. The, is that that little patch that?
Yes, it's right, right north of the, uh, county building.
Okay. And then the last one was the Orange Bowl Committee and Roland Oaks Park?
Yes. So the Orange Bowl Committee, frequently, they like to do what they call legacy projects. Uh, when they come into a community, if you're familiar with Moore Park down there, Moore Park has a, a field that was dedicated by the Orange Bowl. Um, the Orange Bowl Committee pledged, uh, that commitment to the city. Um, originally, they pledged that at Roland Oaks Park, but we're actually looking at, uh, doing something a little different there. Uh, Roland Oaks Park is almost done. Uh, we shouldn't be cutting the ribbon on it in about three to four months. Uh, we're looking at placing that gift at Carroll City Park. We believe it makes more sense there. It's right along two major thoroughfares, 183rd Street, 32nd Avenue, and that is one of our heavy, heavy used football parks.
All right, okay, got it.
Ms. Reeves?
What question? Um, regarding the Formula One funds? Uh, at one time, we had an educational compact that was dissolved. Um, and I think that that's something that you need to revisit. Um, we, it's much needed in our community. Please, if you can, take a look at allowing something. I understand what the young lady was saying, and I apologize to the young lady, uh, for doing that and bringing that to our attention. But we need an educational compact to how it might be and how it might not be. Please take a look at, consider that.
Yeah, Bunch Park is, Bunch Park. It's the historically black neighborhood. Bunch Park is. No, Bunch Park is the historically black area, that's it. No, Bunch Park is the historically black area. People need together. Yeah, they, yeah, they need to get together. She's talking about, um, declaring Bunch Park a historic little, historically, uh, historical black neighborhood, which it is.
Hey, generally, um, historic designations will either come from, uh, a state, at the state level. Uh, but you do have, in terms of taxes, there are no, no taxing senses in the tie to that. Uh, but there are certain things that come about through community redevelopment agencies and things like that. You'll see certain neighborhoods that may be, uh, redeveloped using those types of mechanisms. Uh, I don't know if we have any specific historic designations to any of the specific neighborhoods in the, in the city.
Like the farmhouse, that's a historic. The farmhouse that you guys want to tear down? The farmhouse they're gonna tear down? We can't hear. And then people park on it, yep. What? Oh, yeah, I'll have to put it on YouTube. I'll send it to, I'll send you the link. Think.
Send me that, I'll let us touch it out.
Right.
Not that many citizens, they also have to take up considerations back. Uh, that's the city, aren't really ours. We have to go to the family, uh, miss, uh, certain things. And we will do that, we definitely will do it. Uh, we heard y'all have shown some, and we believe you to work there, and it's your fault. And we have to go together, along the force, to make a difference. Another one thing is that we have to be, you guys, we have to deal with what are your concerns. And then now, when you draw these concerns, to work on those things, to make our living of our residents a little bit better. So we heard, we met, and for the time this evening, we kind of, we anticipated that. Because we, we got an opportunity to have a conversation to talk. So if you have any time, we can ask for information here to manage for you guys and do the whole decisions. So thank you so much again about that, guys.
All right, so these are people here. And there you go.